So I'll officially call to order the regular meeting of Coachella Valley Water District Board of Directors, September 10th, 2024, here in Palm Desert. And would you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
You are married, sir.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberate and justice for all.
Okay, good. Roll call, please.
Yes, good morning, President Powell.
Here.
And I will note when Vice President Estrada arrives. Director Bianco.
Here.
Director Aguilar will be absent for today's meeting. And Director Nelson.
Here.
Thank you. We do have a quorum.
Thank you. Great. Do we have any additions, deletions, or adjustments for today's agenda?
No, sir.
Is there anybody from the public wishing to comment on any items? Let's see any public in here. Don't, don't see any at this time. Our consent calendar consists of items 5A through E. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Very nice. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passed 3-0. We are moving pretty good here. Onto the action calendar, 7A. This is the modification of our Colorado River Conservation Program. Robert, good morning.
Good morning, President Powell. So this item has been before you a few times.
So this is the last iteration. So maybe just a reminder, the first resolution actually passed was for permanent crops. And then the more recent one back in June was actually for, to extend the program to not cover non-permanent crops. This program has been a work in progress. And I think as we get successive applicants, we learn more and more about, you know, how to better complete the procedures. So this last iteration that's up for your consideration actually considers a few revisions. I think one is, so I'll just go right here to revise the definition of grower. To actually mean the applicant who actually puts in to be a part of a filing program has to actually have a history of water use. This negates the, the situation of absentee landlords and others who don't actually farm on the land.
Robert, I apologize for interrupting your presentation. I do want to note, since we did distribute revised material for the board, that you do have it on your right-hand side. There's additional backup for 7A, a revised copy of the staff report that indicates the same change. And then for the record, that that copy will be updated and added to the record should any member of the public request a copy.
And that was just those four words added in red. There's a red line, that's a red line, yeah.
Right, thanks, Sophie. I was actually planning on doing that, but you, I appreciate you kind of flagging that. So the four words, I think just for the public, is actually under sub-bullet A, which is the owner, and then in parentheses, including successor entity, close parentheses. And this is actually to kind of anticipate any situation that with a change in ownership that, you know, that would actually, you know, the ownership would actually kind of continue for the purposes of this application. So I think this is pretty straightforward. So basically, the owner and the leasing are clearly defined here as ones who actually, you know, have to have a history of water use. And the conditions for leasing still has to have a history of water use on the land, actually, and to kind of prevent CBWD getting in a situation of any kind of property disputes. They have to get the permission from the owner to enroll in this application. And then the grower's land is, is defined in Exhibit C of the grower agreement. And that remains largely unchanged. So those are the two key areas I want to flag for you. And we changed the, these definitions in these, in the following areas and rules of regs, the application, also the grower agreement, and just to make things more consistent. We do, and I just want to reassure the board that we do look at, you know, water use over the entire holdings, you know, for the applications very closely. It may not be a perfect system, but I think, you know, we do have systems in place to kind of monitor overall water use just to make sure that the intent of this program is fulfilled and not simply shift the water to another parcel. So with that, happy to entertain any kind of questions that you might have with these modifications.
I'm good. Is there a motion to approve the, this chain, this item?
Yes, I'll, I'll make the motion to approve the changes in the conservation program as described by Mr. Chain.
I'll second.
Okay, good. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passed 4-0.
Thank you.
Thanks, Robert. I should say, I've been seeing real estate agents now describing property as having the attribute of getting paid for water conservation.
I know.
I've heard the same thing. I don't know how much it raises the value of the land, but maybe a little. Put them at the top of the pile. David, so we're on to B. Go ahead.
Yes, sir. Good morning. Purpose of this item is to authorize the purchase and sale agreement and join escrow instructions to acquire approximately 13 acres of land in the name of the North Cathedral City Regional Stormwater Project. The land is for environmental mitigation. And the total cost of this request is $158,550. And I'll leave it at that and take any questions.
I'll make a motion to approve. I'll second.
Good. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passed 4-0. Thanks, David. Yeah, well, pretty straightforward. Next, we have a purchase and sale agreement.
What's the value of the water conservation on that?
Yeah, I mean, it's probably not much. I don't know.
No, not much.
Good morning, President Powell, members of the board, audience, and fellow staff. For the record, my name is Armando Rodriguez with the Engineering Department. The request before you is to seek authorization for agreement and purchase of, and sale for, with the Home Depot for the acquisition of portion of APN 600, 600, 010, 07, and associated easements, possibly at 1.82 acres, and also net access easement. And all this is for the purpose of having a property for listed 5512, which we currently don't have. And we also don't have the associated easement into the Home Depot commercial center. Key provisions, provisions of the transaction, the proper transaction include $85,000 for the parcel and easement. CBWD will pay for the escrow and title costs for $4,000. Contingency about $4,500 for a total request of $93,450. I'll stop with the presentation, see if there's any specific questions associated with this request.
No. Nothing? Is there a motion to approve this one?
I'll make a motion to approve. I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passed 4-0.
Thank you.
Onto D. These are the manhole rehab. Oh, clever. Go ahead, Armando.
Thank you. So this request is to authorize the solicitation of bids for our sewer manhole rehabilitation project for the cities of Palm Desert, Rancho Mirage. We do do this project annually. We go out and look at our sanitation as a whole and really try to pinpoint really severely deteriorated manholes. For this one, we're focusing on 16 manholes. Some, two are within the city of Palm Desert, right at Portola. Five are within, the city also, City of Palm Desert, but at the Gary Avenue within the Portola Country Club here, highlighted in the exhibit. And then we have another eight manholes in Rancho Mirage within the vault. We are estimating the construction cost to be about $600,000, and then we have some soft cost of $24,000. We have the project budgeted this fiscal year for $624,000. And I'll stop here with that presentation to see if there's any additional questions associated with this annual project that we do, do to upkeep our sanitation systems.
I was just curious, so you're grouping these kind of in various areas. Is that, does that just make it easier to get permits and close down the street and do those sorts of things by having them all together?
Yeah, we're trying to group them. For one, it's, we're doing a CIPP liner within the manhole, so we don't have to do open trenching, so it's safer for the more public. We also, the contractor can do about two or three a day. So we are trying to keep them as close as possible. And then we're trying to target the worst-case ones, ones that we think that could fail and give us concerns with associated spill. So we're trying to target the worst ones available.
Two or three a day? That's pretty good. Okay.
Seems like it.
Fast.
Yeah.
Good, is there a motion to approve 7D?
I'll move the motion.
I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passed 4-0.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Armando. Let's see, this is the release of funds from CFD 102 at the Reserve for flood control. David.
Good morning.
Hi.
Purpose of this request here is to authorize a release of funds from the Community Facilities District Number 102 to complete repairs to their flood control system within the reserve. Total cost of this request is $530,000 coming out of the CFD. The CFD maintains, currently maintains a budget of $2.9 million for O and M and $6.7 million roughly for capital replacement. This request is about, a little over 20% of this request is for capital replacement, and the rest is for O and M, which has not been kept up over the past decade or so. And with the influx of all the storms that we've had, this is an opportunity to take advantage of that. That's the request, and I'll take any questions.
Yeah, just on that map, what is that blue ironwood lake? What is that? It looks more like a berm. Do you know what that is? Maybe it's a...
Yes, well, it's, it's a lake. It's a debris basin, the sediment basin up front of that, on the upstream side of that. And then the ironwood lake, we just outlined it in blue. It's a lake. It's not a berm.
Is there water?
There's water in it, yes.
No. Is there? Maybe there is. Well, it's not that long, then. Maybe it's a little smaller than that.
Yeah, it might be. The line work may be deceiving.
Okay. All right, is there a motion to approve 7E?
I'll move the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passed 4-0. Thanks, David. Okay, F. This is the local guideline for implementation of CEQA.
Joanne, good morning. Hi, Joanne. Good morning, President Powell and members of the board. We staff on a regular basis follows and identify changes to CEQA regulations and subsequently make these changes to our guidelines for CEQA implementation. For this year, our, the notable changes are the requirements of filing our notice of determinations and notice of exemptions with both the county clerk and the state clearinghouse. And also the creation of a sanitation master plan, PIER checklist, that's Form R and the attachments, that allows us to streamline environmental reviews for projects that fall within the scope of our 2020 sanitation master plan update. And if they do, then there's no further environmental review that are necessary. And also increase in CEQA filing fees for fiscal year 2025. Please note that these updates do not impact our public process for project-specific EIR that's required by CEQA regulations. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Before, Mr. President, if I may just add for the record, there was a public comment that was emailed to the clerk's office in regards to item 7F. A copy of that was provided to everyone at the dais, and a copy will be added to the record. Also, I'll note that Joanne did contact the individual just to clarify some questions that were made in, in the public comment letter attached.
Okay, thank you. That was more of a project-specific.
Correct, that's what I was mentioning, that these updates don't impact the specific project.
Okay. Is this, how often do we do this one?
Annually.
We do it annually?
Yes. Previously, they were on consent calendar, and we figure we should bring it as an action item.
Is there a motion to approve 7F? Is there a motion to approve 7F?
I'll make a motion. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passed 4-0.
Great, thanks so much.
Next is the ERP Management Services. Good morning.
Hi, good morning, President Powell, members of the board, staff. My name is John Miller. I'm the procurement and contracts manager here at Coachella Valley Water District. And the item that is in front of you today is an action item for the approval of Project Management Services for the Workday ERP and Sprite Point Utility Billing Customer Information System Implementation. Just to give you some background on this, I think you guys have heard about this before as well over the last couple of years. But back on August 13th of this year, the board approved the award of contracts to Alight Solutions Workday and Sprite Point to implement the new ERP solution. The key benefits and objectives of the new ERP solution is to implement a single unified system that has, that will integrate with our finance, HR, and utility functions. The system will be designed to interface with third-party applications and will come equipped with building analytics to enhance our operational capabilities. Some of the core advantages of this new ERP solution is it's going to be a unified platform, and it will consolidate systems of records for finance, HR, and utility billing. It's enhanced the user experience. It's going to be a user-friendly interface with mobile access for greater convenience and accessibility. We're going to see process efficiencies by having a centralized information to simplify our administrative processes and improve overall efficiencies. We're going to have enhanced reporting. It's going to give us advanced functionality to boost reporting accuracy, decision-making, customer service, and data security. To ensure that this project aligns with the district needs and progresses smoothly, staff recommends engaging Barry Dunn as our program management consultant. Unlike Estrada, which focuses, who will focus primarily on the technical aspects of the implementation, Barry Dunn will provide the comprehensive oversight and advocate for the district's interests throughout the project lifecycle. So staff is recommending that the board approve, to proceed with Barry Dunn. Their expertise in program management will be crucial in keeping the project on track and ensuring that our strategic goals are met effectively. So the request for proposal process, back on June 6th of this year, we issued RFP Number 202419 for the Program Management Services. We, it was, it was sent out to over 600 companies. Fifty of the companies downloaded the RFP, and eight responded by the closing deadline of July 17, 2024. We did a cursor review of all of the eight proposals that were submitted. They met the minimum submittal requirements that were required to move on in the evaluation process. The evaluation committee, consisting of members from the Public Affairs and Customer Experience, Operation, Information Systems, and Finance, reviewed all of the eight proposals. We ended up shortlisting it down to three of the top-rated firms who were invited in to provide proposal presentations and interviews. Overall, we looked at all three of them. We shortened that down to two. Asked for BAFOs from SDI Presence and Barry Dunn. The final evaluations and total overall score was Barry Dunn scored the highest with a total combined score of 83.54. So the, based off of this, the evaluation committee is recommending award to Barry Dunn based on being the most qualified firm for the district's program management consulting needs and represents the best overall value for the district. So the qualifications of Barry Dunn is they have a lot of public sector experience, specifically with the Sprite Point and Workday implementation. They have over 650 public sector clients. They show a strong commitment and understanding to the unique requirements of the district. They have relevant experience, like I mentioned earlier, with Sprite Point and recent Workday implementations. They handled, they have handled over more than 200 system consulting projects similar to ours. So they're exactly what it takes to meet our needs. They are proposing an expert team. The team includes top-notch experts with specialized experience in recent Workday ERP and Sprite Point implementations. They have in-house resources. With a consultant team of over 335 professionals, Barry Dunn keeps everything in-house. This means no outsourcing and plenty of technical support is available if we need, need it for supplemental services. They have water district knowledge and know-how. They have a strong track record with water districts, giving them a deep understanding of the complexities and systems we work with. And they have a proven approach. Barry Dunn's plan for our project shows they got a solid methodology and effective change management strategies. They're committed to putting in the right amount of effort and make sure that we have a successful go-live. In short, Barry Dunn brings the right mix of experience, expertise, and understanding to the, sure that the project is successful.
Yeah.
And finally, this is an action item, and staff is recommending approval and authorization, approval and authorize the general manager to execute a professional services agreement for the Program Management Services to Barry Dunn, McNeil, and Parker in the amount of $1,753,440. We're also asking that the board approve a 25% project contingency in the amount of $438,360. So the total authorized request is $2191,800. And this amount is within the $16 million approved budget.
How long a period of time are we talking about that they're going to...
So they're, they're going to be on board for the entire implementation project. The implementation starts October 6th, goes all the way through June of 2026. So they'll be there during the entire implementation.
So almost two years?
Almost two years, yes, sir.
Just curious about the contingency. This is kind of, is mostly to bring in our own staff?
So this contingency would be to reach back. If we, we don't know what we're going to need yet, but we know that we're going to need some technical assistance with regards to the integrations and other staff augmentations that we just don't know that we're going to need yet, but we know that we're going to need it.
Yeah, I guess I'm curious on the, on the, when we originally approved the other contractors, imagine we had a contingency in there also.
Yes, we did.
Kind of for the same thing, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so probably don't need both of them. That's how I'm thinking.
Yeah, go ahead.
Good morning, board members. The original contingency for the contract with the ERP is for potential task order changes within the ERP implementation. These are for things that are, we have to do internally, whether it's an IS or other subject matter actions that we may require to facilitate implementation, because we also going to have our own responsibilities to do, obviously. Like, for instance, some of the data architecture, generating those vast reports that we're going to have to provide. We have about 930 requirements that we have to meet within that. So the vendor is responsible for bringing the system together and working with us to implement it. But there's, there's a lot of responsibilities and obviously actions that we have to do in our end as well. And so the contingency for these other things is if we need additional technical support to be able to meet the needs of the implementation, the responsibilities that we have to obviously handle ourselves.
So technically, or typically, what staff does is they itemize under contract awards amounts for in-house services that they're familiar with, that typically go with that type of work. But there's always, also, what we've been using is a 10% contingency for task orders or additional work. It's still within the scope of the contract. In this particular case, they haven't itemized it, but there's still, I mean, we don't do one of these ERP implementations that often. And so there is quite a bit of unknown there. And all we're attempting to do is to be able to keep this moving without having to come back and ask the board, you know, for more money to, to keep things on track.
Seems like a lot to me.
And like I said, it's not going to, I mean, we're, we're very careful. We're, I'd like to believe that we're good stewards of the finances of the district. And if we don't need it, we don't need it. But we, one of the things that we have very clear from the general managers, we don't want to keep coming back to the board for every little change, right? And so we feel that this will give us a good cushion to be able to address those unknowns. It's a fast-paced implementation. It's 24 months. We also have about six-month contingency. But we, just think about this, we have 56 integrations along to, to work on, right? And so I only have four business application programmers that will be working with the vendor to do this. So it is very likely that we will need additional technical expertise to be able to work on the different... They don't use the word modules here, but you can look at it like modules, right? One for each department. Plus, we have to ensure that all the 930 requirements are done properly. Plus, whatever other new process improvements, they may come out as we start using the system.
Since we're shortening the timeline from five to three years, did, did we, are we changing our five-year CIP?
So there, we're not actually shorting it. That was originally what we had in mind. This implementation is different because it's a cloud system. So they don't come in and build the system in-house like your typical legacy systems. They basically spin off systems they already have in the cloud and roll it out that way. So it's a much faster thing. But I, as far as the CIP, I think Carla can speak about that and explain that a little more.
Director Bianco, you're correct. So the first-year CIP, which is this current fiscal year, will not change. So we did amend the contracts to live within this year's budget. If you recall, the Workday and Sprite Point initial contract software platforms are lower cost for the first two years while we go through implementation, then it ramps up after that. Years four and five will be compressed into years two and three of the CIP project, and that will be brought forth when we do the next year's budget and the budget after that. The overall budget is still the same. It's just now going to be compressed into three years versus five.
So is there going to be projects? Is there going to be something that we, that we take from year two and three and stretch out to four and five?
It's spread out throughout the different funds. So either we would utilize some additional reserve funding upfront from each one of those funds, or depending on, we'll work with Kerry, depending on other CIP projects. I know we always have a vision to get a lot of stuff done, and things like Chromium Six come up, and our attention is pulled to otherwise. But we will certainly strategize and try to live within the original budget projected.
All right, well, so we look forward to hearing how much we're going to not use that contingency.
We hope not to.
You're going to tell us afterwards how much is left over, right?
Well, look, I think this was the same, a similar, rather, approach that we used with the SCADA. And we did, we didn't use all the contingency with the SCADA. If you recall, I think we left about $1.5 million, close to $2 million, that subsequently were already being used on the RTU replacement. So, you know, obviously, and we have negotiated, because they were, they were proposed, not just in this one, but in the one on the actually ERP. There was an additional hours that were proposed, and we, we shaved it as much as we could to make sure that is realistic, obviously, so.
You know, John, that's, that's a really good point about the contingency and, and the reporting, Luis, about, about that. You know, if the vendor sees, oh my gosh, they have a 25% contingency, and, you know, they'll, they'll strategize on how to use it, right? Or they could strategize.
Or maybe they do a little less work and we do a little more.
Yeah, and so, I mean, it, it seems as though it would be maybe nice to know on a lot of these projects, you know, from this project, I mean, this, not just this project, but a lot of... Uh, you know, from this project, I mean, this, not just this project, but a lot of the engineering projects that we do that we approve these big contingencies and might be nice to know, uh, uh, maybe just as a, as a item in, with, as projects finish in the general manager's resort, uh, report about um, you know, percent of contingency used and everything. Uh, it might not be that, uh, that big of, you know, that larger workload and just put it in there. So something to consider.
Yeah.
Luis, um. So the last action we took was to award a contract to these three different uh, what, what would you call them?
Yeah, so two software companies. So uh, Workday and um, Sprite Point. Workday is the ERP, Sprite Point is the building system.
So what is that? Is that just the software?
That's the software, yeah.
Is that a subscription or is that like a one-time thing installation?
It's a subscription. It has an upfront uh, payment for implementation, but then there's an annual uh, service. And remember, we went up to ten years, which is, that's another thing to keep in mind. It was a ten-year.
A ten-year contract?
Mm-hmm.
And then how, and how big was that contract? So?
The twenty-one million dollars, I believe, for both. Including the, including the Allied. So Allied is the, the company that does the integration for tho- both of those uh, systems.
Okay, so then, so when we talk about the sixteen million, what, what is that?
The fifteen?
The sixteen.
Oh, the sixteen million? That is um, the original, actually, John can speak about that. That's the original, the, the upfront implementation, correct?
Yes, that's for the um, upfront implementation cost. That doesn't include, once we do the go-live, um, the follow-on um, annual expenditures that would come out of the operating budget.
Okay, and then, so you said the budget wasn't gonna change, but then I think on the report I read that um, that you hadn't anticipated using the, what, what are you calling this? The program management?
Yes.
So that wasn't included in the budget or was it? And then, or, or, or you had a big enough budget where you could just roll it in?
Right, so initially we anticipated that we wouldn't have enough money within the sixteen million to also accommodate this contract. But um, we're doing the best and final offers and negotiating that initial pricing for the software with the two companies allowed us to alleviate some of the budget and include this um, contract within that initial sixteen million dollars. So we didn't have to come to the board and ask for additional funding.
Okay, good. And, and then uh, one last question. How did you come up with the percent allocation uh, for the different funds? Was there a methodology to that?
For the contingency?
No, for the percent allocation.
To the input, the budget allocation.
Right, so those were um, prepared before I started working here. I think it's been about three or four years since those allocations were determined. Um, but they're based on the funds that would be utilizing the software. And so that's why it's distributed amongst each one of the funds. The domestic fund absorbs the most of the costs because it has the highest amount of customers uh, followed by the canal fund and um, the rack funds, and so all of the funds um, that the cost is distributed proportionally amongst the funds utilizing the software.
Okay, and that was specific to this project or is that a standard formula that we used for?
It's specific to this project. It's slightly different depending on the um, the general district projects.
Thank you.
Okay. There's a lot of parts to this.
And it was, so I think this is, yeah, this is it. Again, we received the message from Jim says uh, basically, don't piece, don't piecemeal it, you know, and we were not piecemealing it, but they're very separate things. Uh, we were not ready to bring this one.
So don't need another consultant to help us work with this consultant?
That's all internal work, yeah. And again, it's the same program we did with SCADA. If you think of it, this would be kinda like CGR's role uh, back then.
Okay.
Also, keep in mind that this was one of the most cost-effective uh, solutions that we identified for the district. And we up, uh, uploading uh, or fore-loading the future payments for the services. So there's no hidden cost for, you know, the next ten years. That's my point.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion to approve this? You don't really have a choice. Except for maybe on the contingency, we could squeeze that.
Unless, yeah, we can have him come back for another, you know, cut it in half and have him come back for that, but.
You know, if I, if I could, um, again, we don't do this that often, and the staffing levels we have don't really support this amount of work in addition to the regular daily workload. We don't wanna, we don't wanna deliver something that's not going to work. And so it's extremely important to make sure we have the right qualified people from the outside to support this transition. If they don't go well, it's really bad.
I, I hear you. We just, we just are caught off guard.
So you can be penny wise and pound foolish here. This is not obligating the funds. It's just allowing staff to proceed when there are issues that come up that need attention. They're, I think they've done a pretty good job. I think we've got a pretty good track record on managing projects here.
We just, we just thought that the uh, original contractor who was awarded, that was all included. Like that, that would be part of the package. I think that's, that's why we're kinda cut off guard. That there's someone else that has to manage that guy when we thought, you know, that it, it's, it's such a big thing that they know what they're doing and they've done this before and they don't need management, so.
And if I may.
We were saying, this is a big thing and it's uh, we, we don't wanna, we don't wanna have egg on our face with the public.
So we, we, uh, the executive sponsors, Carla, myself and Scott Berry, will be managing the vendor, right? This is to help us uh, uh, deliver the implementation and the most reliable double-checking testing. Like I said, it's the similar, the same um, uh, program that we implemented with SCADA, right? One of my main concerns is billing, right? If we, there's so many, uh, our billing is complicated, right? And that we, we need to really focus on that to make sure that we get the billing right. There's a lot of testing. There's a lot of, that we, we, there's a lot of processes that remain hidden from us that we don't, you know, as, un- until we start actually doing the migrations, those will come up. Like I said, we identified nine hundred and thirty requirements, but I guarantee you there's more. We may also have to tap into um, novel line um, experts to help us get a better understanding how the data was structured in order to be able to relay that information to the vendor. So there's significant risk when it comes to the billing side of things, and this is not something we do on a daily basis, right? We manage projects, but this is a sig- this is a house-wide uh, impact, right? And if it doesn't uh, th- this is essentially a guarantee to ensure that this project is suc- is successful, right? And so it reduces the risk significantly uh, be- in a protects the investment that the district is doing, obviously, as well. Um, if we don't manage it properly, we can keep coming back for task order changes throughout the year. Um, because it will obviously create additional delays. Uh, so, no, this is not necessarily to manage the vendors, but it's to help us with the overall implementation. Uh, coordinating uh, uh, testing, coordinating uh, cause remember, each department has to test everything they're developing for us. Uh, and helping us do vendor coordination with the other fifty-six integrations, right? So it's, it's beyond that. That's just one component of it.
But this is gonna ensure that when we go live, that cut, we don't have thousands of customers who say their bill went up because they got a new.
And we, we do parallel testing for everything. We do payroll is another huge concern for us, right? Uh, and uh, these, this is what uh, what helps minimize some of the risk. If you get, if you don't get your testing correctly, and it takes a lot of time because you have to go line by line, process by process, running the billing one time, second time, third time, then we have to do the cut. That's on the original implementation. Then when we, before we do the final cut over, we did, we run the billing at least, you know, we have a thirty-day billing. So we run it every time until we make sure that every bill is correct. And even post-implementation, we will have quality assurance to make sure that these things are not gonna break, right? So um, it's a hundred and twenty-five thousand customers.
But Director Bianco is correct. I mean, when these things fail, they fail at the customer level, the customer billing level. I mean, the city of San Diego had significant problems when they cut over using SAPWP. IID had significant problems when that, but both of those used SAP, which is an extremely open architecture, which is almost prone. It almost invites those types of problems. And so one of the things I asked staff to make sure is that, you know, we do what we can to minimize that risk. I don't know that we can ultimately eliminate it, but we are doing everything we can to minimize it.
Yeah, it, Luis, when we, when we did the SCADA uh, build out and implementation, you, you came to the board and had provided regular updates and so forth. So this looks like a three-year project implementation and uh, uh, and migration. So can you do the same thing with that? And let us know.
We're done to do that.
Uh, what the progress is, what, what's going on and when there's major events like uh, you know, switching over to, to this or that, so we're, we have uh, uh, you know, we're aware and, you know, kinda keep our ears to what's going on on that customer level.
Yes, and that is our intention to provide all the visibility as possible and to keep you abreast as to how the project is progressing. Um, and again, one of the things that we will not do, obviously, is to approve uh, the, the go-live without making sure that everything is testing. And prior to do that, we will come to the board, we'll give you a full update to ensure that you understand where we are, all the differences we have taken to mitigate these potential issues. Um, but again, if you, if you, if you look at it in totality, it's gonna be, let's say, twenty-three million dollars. Some proposals exceeded far that, right? And this is all-in. Um, so I still think it's a good invest, is a, is a very uh, a good investment for the district. Um, you know, Sprite Point is also one of the best billing systems out there. They work with uh, utilities, right? So we, we're getting the, the best of breed on, on, on these systems. Workday is actually being implemented by several other organizations inco- including um, Eastern Municipal. Um, so, you know, we're not getting some obscure solutions that can intro- can introduce potential issues for us. We are getting uh, something that is, we feel that is the best fit for the district. We don't get the most expensive or the, we, we don't look at, we look at the best fit for the services we provide, and that is usually how we implement the systems.
May, I know we're a long ways away from it, but maybe when we get there, you can run my bill or your bill or, or all of our bills and, and we can take a look and see what it looks like.
Yeah, well, no, we do parallel billing. We do, in fact, right now, when we do implement uh, uh, any, any rate changes, uh, we work with our billing um, uh, staff and we make sure that we run parallel bills to make sure that we don't have those issues. And it gets all, it doesn't get, nothing gets approved until it gets um, authorized by uh, the director billing and, and his triple check. Um, so, you know, we do, uh, we've done it where we show you bills that we run in parallel, uh, even for the most minimal changes. And so, yeah, that's something that we know the, the reputation is a stick for the district, so we take uh, extreme care on that.
Good. Do we have a motion like?
I'll make a motion.
We didn't get one, did we?
I'll second.
All right, so to approve it as recommended, um, motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passed four-oh.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, this is the BMO. Can I just ask a question before we, I have a couple of questions on this? Cause otherwise it's not that complicated. But uh, I don't understand when you, when you say fully collateralized certificate of deposit, what is the collateral that they're referring to? And then I'm just curious how we, how we came to be doing business with BMO in the first place.
So I'll ask um, two, both, uh, fully collateralized is a actual, it's, it's like your bank account where you can't lose your principal. And so since we're a government entity, BMO Bank needs to fully collateralize and have the same amount of funds available uh, for us to withdraw at any point in time. And so it's um, it's like having a savings account, but it's a certi- certificate of deposit account with BMO. BMO used to be Bank of the West, um, and so we have engaged with them because of the line of credit that the district has that is now covered by BMO Bank.
So this is the Bank of the West line of credit. All right. That's the part I didn't.
That's how we began our banking relationship with them or institutional relationship with them. However, these lines of credit are separate from the, sorry, these letters of credit are separate from the line of credit.
So, so, so my understanding on, on uh, on going back to the collateral. So we're gonna give them, le- under this proposal, we would, we would give them five million dollars of cash. And the purpose of them, of, of this, of them paying us the interest is they're gonna take that cash and loan it to somebody else, right? I mean, are they, are they just holding it as a deposit so that they? I mean, I know when
Yeah.
banks have deposit requirements of what, like sixty percent or something? I don't even know the, the requirement anymore, but.
Not for a government agency. It's a hundred percent collateralized for government agencies.
But what, but how do, so if they're just holding that money, how do they pay us?
Um, is Tito on the line? Any chance? No, Edward?
I mean, you think they, they're gonna lend, lend it out to somebody else, at least part of it. So, so where, you know, where's the collateral is my point? I, I just don't understand what, what that is.
It's a government code section that requires the banks to, even our US bank account with our regular checking account, it's fully collateralized.
So there's a physical asset there?
Separate from other assets.
I know, which would, I mean, I'd make the argument that the five million dollars is the collateral, which, which is essentially saying they can't touch it unless they give it back to us. So how do they pay us interest on it?
I don't know the intricacies of a bank and how a bank operates. I'm sorry.
I know. I, it just doesn't make sense.
Right.
Well, they have to lend it out, so then what's the collateral? Uh, you see what I'm saying? Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I don't understand that.
To answer that nuance for you and.
I mean, for smaller, for smaller amounts, you know, people feel comfortable giving money to a bank because they have FDIC insurance. This is obviously a larger amount, so it won't be insured. So, so it's collateralized, which is great, but what's the collateral? That's my, my question, I guess.
Okay. I don't know.
Okay. Carla, when, when you first came on board uh, and took over the department, I remember you had identified some of, some of this. I think you had identified they were putting some money in the county. And you had talked about perhaps moving some of that money to a separate account where we could benefit from higher interest rates. And I'm just wondering if, if this is part of that or is this completely different?
No, it's completely different. Um, I guess what, what's happening is that these letters of credits are now required for our capital improvement projects. And we have had either escrow agreements, letters of credit, depository accounts that are requested from Fish and Wildlife, from the Bureau of Indian Affairs or the um, Bureau of Land Management. And so we, I feel bad because finance has been holding up these projects to some extent because we've had trouble getting these letters of credits. And so we've worked with numerous, with both US Bank, which is our current banking institution, and Bank of the West, or sorry, BMO Bank now. BMO Bank has actually turned around these letters of credits really quickly in forty-five days. US Bank is taking six months to turn these around. And in BMO has offered us a lower rate because we do have the line of credit, but the line of credit can be terminated at any point in time. And so they've asked us to perhaps consider um, establishing a long-term banking relationship with this certificate of deposit so that they can continue to give us the lower rates. Um, and they're quite significant. This is an example of what those rates look like. So for the five million, sorry, for the seven million dollar letter of credit, it's a difference of about eighty, almost eighty-eight thousand dollars per year that we would be paying to have this letter of credit standing with them. And these, that one in particular, I believe, is for fifty years. And even if you're just taking it over by, let's say, ten years, it's eight hundred and almost seventy-nine thousand dollars um, that we would be saving by opening this um, CD.
Yeah.
And the same thing with the other one.
So, yeah. So it's a lower return compared to some of the other liquid investments.
Right, slightly lower.
But we're getting this advantage of the better rate on the letter of credit.
Right.
Can, can we go, do you mind? Hold on a second. Let me, so I'm looking at the letter of credit, the seven million, which is the big one, right?
Yes.
And it says in there that they will, they will essentially allow us to draw against that. But the beneficiary, which is the Department of Interior in this case, has to state that CBWD has been determined to be in non-compliance. What are we in non-compliance with?
Mitigation.
For the mitigation measures at the Whitewater. I believe this is the Whitewater project.
Right.
Required this um, letter of credit. So whenever we don't rehab or we neglect to maintain the site as it was originally um.
But don't we always stay in compliance? And, and so the point of the letter of credit is to protect, it, it can only be used when we, when we are out of compliance?
This is a determination by the agency, regular.
And don't we wanna?
It's a new requirement.
I, I mean, I, I'm, yeah, I don't, I'm not getting any of this.
Basically, this, a letter of credit is set aside, so should we ever return the land and not we have it in the condition that we took it over at the time, then this letter of credit will be used for that purpose? So not necessarily, we're, we're not necessarily out of compliance.
But they have, the interior has to say we are out of compliance.
Right, they have to deem that at the time that we return the land, which we probably will never will be, uh, because we're leasing the land on an ongoing long year, a long-term basis. Only when they deem in, out of compliance, which we're not. As long as we have this letter of credit in place, President Powell.
It's like a, it's like an unnecessary request by the Department of the Interior.
Right, and it's similar to the California Department of Wildlife. The new requirement is to have a letter of credit as a security to, for us to move forward with our projects prior to our land mitigation uh, measures.
We don't have a choice.
You don't have a choice, so, so.
It's a new requirement.
So you could either post a bond or have a letter of credit.
Correct, it's a security as a risk aversion.
That's something that, that's something that, that the department is requiring.
Yes, yes, it's a new requirement that just came out last year.
It's acting like a bond.
Right, and it's also the endowment pos, uh, part, aspect of it, we, we mitigate the land, it's in conservation, we have to have set aside an amount of fun for our long-term uh, O and M.
And they're charging us?
To have it on standby.
So we don't use it?
They're charging us eighty-eight thousand dollars to have it standby?
Well, that, that's assuming we get the CDs. They're, they're charging us a hundred and forty thousand dollars. Without the CDs.
Without the CD, yes. And it's fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-two with it.
Save eighty-seven thousand by doing a CD, but you're gonna give up some interest compared to what you'd earn in those other liquid investments.
Yeah.
The ones in the county?
Yeah, and these particular ones are already negotiated at that lower rate. This, this is an example of what we would have paid.
So I'm guessing part of the answer for the fully, what the collateral is, is that they're, they probably do have some sort of a collateral that they identify on their balance sheet, and that's why they're paying you a lower rate in order to have a fully.
Yes, there is an annual cost associated with having these.
Yeah, you, if you didn't have a fully collateralized CD, it would be a higher rate, probably closer to five percent.
Probably.
Yeah. Alright, well, so this is really being driven by the requirement of the Department of the Interior.
Correct.
Each one of them, the Fish and Wildlife, Department of Interior and Bureau of Land Management, I mean.
Yeah.
I, I don't think staff wants additional workers, you know. Um, I also questioned why this was happening and um, it, it may have been because other agencies weren't returning land back. And so this is our leverage now is, okay, if you're not going to do it voluntarily, then we're going to have you put these letters of credit.
Yeah, so is there, what's the magic on that five million dollar number? Is that what they said we needed to do or?
It was something we negotiated. We didn't wanna put a lot. It's less than one percent of our total portfolio um, investment that we have right now. Um, it's, it could be slightly more.
Well, I was gonna say, could you just do, could you just do one million and, and have a nice relationship with one million?
The reason for the amount was there was a construction cost estimate because some of the ponds are in, that include two different entities, us and the BLM. So what would it cost to restore the land and separate the ponds that are ours versus other ones? So it was a bunch of earthwork and berms required if that ever did happen.
To unwind the whole project.
Exactly, that, that, that's how we, that's how we come up with the cost.
Seems so absurd. Yeah.
I mean, it's the same thing as bonding. Hey, how much is, what, what is the risk? And it's a five million dollar bond and it's, it's the same type of thing. So it was, we actually, I actually worked with Chad to come up with the number that would be required to put all these berms back so we could still replenish on our land.
No, I, no, that's the, no, but that answers how much is the letter of credit, right? I mean, the, the five million dollars is just to establish the relationship with BMO to make them, convince them to give us the lower rate on the letter of credit.
Right.
Did they come up with the five million? I mean, where'd it come from?
We did, we talked about it. I mean, we, we asked, you know, what would be a reasonable amount that they felt comfortable um, in order to continue to turn around these letters of credit in a sufficient ti, like forty-five day timeline and give us the lower rate. Um, looking at our investment portfolio, we said, well, we could maybe do one percent. And this is slightly less, it's about one um, point seven five percent of the overall portfolio.
Alright. Okay, well, it doesn't seem horrible.
And so this, this money there, it stuck for X amount of years?
Um, no, we're proposing to do a six-month and maybe a twelve-month, so two CDs, two-point-five million dollars each. Um, the rates that are on the screen here or from last week, they do change every Monday. The current week's rates are slightly lower. The six-month is at three-point-nine-nine and the twelve-month is at, one second here, um, three-point-four-two-six. Um, and so every six months, um, we would be determining if we would be reinvesting those, uh, again, twelve to six months. We still wanted to be highly liquid because they are coming from liquid investments right now. They're in Kemp, which are um, highly liquid, so we want to kinda keep them the same way.
But, but the idea is that as long as we're, we don't own that land out there at the replenishment ponds, we're probably gonna need to have something like this in place for, forever. Unless we can somehow.
Acquire the land.
Acquire the land.
Or the requirement changes, goes away again.
Yeah, good luck. Alright, so is there, is there a motion to approve seven H?
I'll make the motion to approve item seven H.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passed four oh. And vehicles. So Stuart in here, we must be buying more trucks. Why Chevy?
Although he's buying, he's buying, he's buying less and getting rid of more, so.
Why, why, I'm just curious about the Chevy. I.
Cause they didn't want to buy Dodge.
Or Ford, what about Ford?
Thank you. We gave the opportunity for others to participate and they chose not to, so. Uh, good morning, President Powell, Vice President Estrada and distinguished members of the board. Uh, we're here asking you to authorize the execution of purchase orders for the thirty-nine vehicles and equipment in the amount of two million, three-hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand, five-hundred-and-seventy-two dollars and to ratify the purchase of four vehicles in the amount of seven-hundred-and-thirty-thousand, zero-seventy-one, and those are noted in the included table. This request also authorizes the contingency in the amount of two thousand, three-hundred-and-fifty-six dollars for a total request of three million, one-hundred-thousand dollars. Additionally, this request is to authorize the disposal of up to fifty vehicles. The fiscal year twenty-twenty-five Motor Pool Capital Improvement Budget includes funding for the purchase of the forty-three vehicles and equipment in the amount of three million, one-hundred-thousand. And as such, there will be no adverse impact to the FY twenty-five budget. We, additionally, we also anticipate about four hundred thousand in uh, auction funds. The ratification by the Board of Directors for the purchase of the one F-six-hundred and the three F-six-fifties is required as the original procurement method was modified. Initially, the board authorized the purchase of the vehicles on January nineteenth, twenty-twenty-two and January fifteenth, twenty-twenty-four respectively. However, Ford was unable to provide a production date for any of those chassis, which necessitated CBWD to locate and procure trucks that were available uh, for immediate purchase and to meet the operational needs. Finally, the purchase of the F-six-hundred and the six-fifties is an integral component of the uh, proposed mitigation plan that we have with the South Coast Air Quality Management District to comply with Rule eleven ninety-six and will serve to replace those diesel vehicles with the gasoline-powered chassis. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that. Motion. Um, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passed four oh. Written Communications, I know we had the addition on the SEQA letter. That was mentioned earlier. Board General, and I, I know I haven't, I think I have it till nine-thirty, so I think we're gonna be okay here. Board General comments, Director Nelson.
No comment.
Yeah.
So my weather guy gives me an update every week of his prognosis for the next month and the future, kind of a crystal ball. And then he is, was telling me that he thinks Friday may be the last hundred degrees of the year.
Of the year?
Of the year, which is a pretty.
I am right, I'm writing that down.
Bold, pretty bold statement. So I hope he's just close.
This is your guy?
Yeah, yeah, it's kinda, today's the last hot day is basically it, right?
We will see.
Yeah, interesting.
I, I don't have any comments. Oh, well, I'll be at the luncheon on, I think it's Friday, so I'm not sure if you guys are going. You are, I'll see there. That's it.
I'll be there. Um, I don't have any comments. So um, report, or do we have any requests for future agenda items? No. Um, reports, I'm gonna do mine and then add one just in case I get called away earlier. So the first, the only one on the list is uh, Agua Caliente Principals Meeting, Directors Powell and Estrada, we did meet with the full council and DWA and going better than I expected. How about that? Put that in the headlines. We have two or three more principals meetings already on the calendar, about one every four weeks, so. Um, feels like we're getting close to the end zone, but um, you never know, there might be an interception or a fumble. But we're, so far, we're going alright. Uh, I did have one to add on yesterday, the ninth, um, we had the Desert Valleys Builders Association meeting and uh, I did attend that in person and it was pretty standard fare. I mean, you definitely hear a lot of feedback about um, folks trying to get power in the East Valley for projects. And, and the big, you know, the big projects, if you have fifteen-hundred or two thousand homes, which is rare, you build your own substation for twenty million dollars. Otherwise, you're, you know, hopefully gonna, if you're in India, you're gonna try to get into that deal and everyone else is, is, you know, either picking up little tiny scraps of power or, or there's, it's, the plan's not clear of what, what they're gonna do. It's a little frightening. Anyways, any other meetings?
Yeah, I have a couple, John. I- interesting on the development side, but um, so yesterday there was a thirty-by-thirty um, presentation by the Secretary Crowfoot uh, in the California Natural Resources Association. They have a, they've set a goal uh, to conserve thirty percent of the land in California and thirty percent of the coastal waters. And the report was that they'd reach twenty-four percent of the land and sixteen percent of the uh, coastal waters. And so what that, what does that mean? Um, and I wrote this down, that lands uh, that, and coastal areas that are durably protected, managed to sustain functional ecosystems, both intact and restored, um, that, to the diversity of life they support. So um, the Agua Caliente actually made a presentation about one of the trails that they've restored and uh, some of the land that's been dedicated to um, um, to conservation in those areas. And so it was a good presentation of a, from a local perspective, and this was statewide. Uh, but just something to be kinda mindful for us to, uh, you know, is, i- if we have lands that are, you know, set aside for, uh, you know, different, uh, different things that we oughta be a part of that as well. So uh, good meeting. And then uh, on the September fourth, um, Kerry Scott and I uh, talked about um, uh, a panel, an agricultural panel at Crewe coming up. Um, so um, I've uh, jumped on that bandwagon. Thanks Kerry for the opportunity and uh, uh, starting to, um, but in any case, since then, starting to make a lot of calls and so forth with uh, with panelists and so forth. So uh, working on that, so that's it.
So that would include Colorado and, and that?
Yeah, it's gonna be an Upper Basin and Lower Basin and uh, um, it, it seemed a little bit heavily stacked on the U- Upper Basin side, so I've uh, got another Lower Basin uh, guy who I think will add a lot of uh, um, definition to that, so.
A Colorado River user, obviously. Um, okay, good. So um, good, any other meetings? Is there a motion to approve per diem for the meetings reported on?
So I shouldn't.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passed four oh. General Manager.
Nothing this morning, sir.
Alright.
Thanks for your support on the issues.
Count, uh, twenty-five percent. Go ahead and introduce yourself, our counsel.
Morning, Board Members. Uh, Nick Norvell from BBK filling in for Jeff Wright. Nice to be here. Um, just only report is that the legislative session ended as of uh, August thirty-first and a number of bills are pending on the Governor's desk, so we're keeping an eye on what's uh, signed and what's vetoed and we'll continue to report back over the next few months uh, on new legislation that'll go into effect in twenty-twenty-five.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any departmental reports?
Yes, sir, we have one. Scott Burt would like to share a couple of comments.
Yeah. Laura Jerskow.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the board. I'm pleased to introduce Karen Borja. She joined us last week as the Government Affairs Program Manager. Karen is a native of the Coachella Valley and she has extensive experience and relationships in government affairs across the Coachella Valley. And we think she'll do a great job in achieving the board's priorities.
So, thank you, welcome.
Welcome.
Welcome. You wanna share a few words?
Now, now I'm curious, now that, now we hear you're a Coachella Valley native, I'm just curious, what part of the Coachella Valley?
Good morning. Nice to meet you all. I am from the city of Coachella originally. I live in India and lived in India for the last decade or so.
Great.
I come from the public health sector. Um, I, sorry, I was not prepared. I am definitely looking forward to working with you all, working with the great staff that you all have at CBWD um, and with some of our consultants to ensure that our legislative priorities move forward um, in sort of every level of government, from the federal state to the local levels. Thank you for the time.
Well, welcome.
Thanks, Karen.
Thanks, Karen. Good recovery.
Yeah, very good. I'd like to put you through the trial by fire.
Just to see what you're made of.
Just keep shutting off. I don't think I'm touching it, but maybe I am, who knows? So at this time, the board will recess into closed session to consider the items listed on the agenda. Uh, following closed session, we will reconvene and report out. The regular meeting is hereby reconvened and we have no reportable action from closed session and with no further business, we're adjourned.